Amy?
Yes. It didn't scare me.
Call the order roll call and establish the Coral Police. I couldn't do that with a straight face.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Uh, Jason is absent and Veronica?
Yes.
Alright, stand with me for prayer please. Our Father, we come to you right now and we just ask your, your guidance, your wisdom. Discernment, Father. We pray for our safety while we're in here and we pray for our surrounding communities right now that are dealing with the fires. I pray your hedge of protection around all those firefighters. I pray that you always protect our police officers. And Father, I just thank you for what we're here for tonight. The totality of all of it. In Jesus' precious name, amen. I'd like to put somebody on the spot right now. Ty?
Ma'am.
Would you like to come up and lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely.
Boys, come join your dad. I went into teacher mode right there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Y'all be nice to me at school tomorrow, okay? Don't hold a grudge. Alright, number four, consideration discussion and possible action to proclaim the city of Perkins as a Purple Heart City, Bob.
This is a program that Connie Norrie reached out about, getting Perkins designated as a Purple Heart City. So we would need to pass the proclamation and we have some signs made should the commission decide to do that.
Commissioners? Alright, I'll, I'll read it at this time. If I get emotional, I, I always don't write them down. I know. Well, my country's special to me and, uh, anyway. So whereas the residents of Perkins have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who has selfishly served their country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the military order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legal legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. And whereas Perkins appreciates the sacrifices of Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believes it is important to acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support they have earned. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Carla Cummings, Mayor of the City of Perkins, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the city of Perkins as a Purple Heart City and encourage the residents of Perkins to show their appreciation for the sacrifices of the Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage and show them the honor and support they have earned. And witness thereof, therefore, uh, thereof, sorry, I have set my hand and caused the affixed great seal of the city of Perkins on this twenty-ninth day of October, 2024. I make a motion that we pass the proclamation that the city of Perkins is a Purple Heart City.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Um, Ty? You and Connie?
I had four.
I've had four of them made. Just take this one. Take this one for the assembly that you're gonna have on Saturday. And I'm very proud of you, sir. And I'll be there, okay?
Good.
Saturday the ninth.
Got you, Saturday the ninth.
Just making sure he doesn't show up on the first or whatever.
Saturday the ninth.
I love you.
Do it.
I'm trying to take your job, just.
Plus, throw, under. Connie? You guys, I'll get this out of the way.
Same would always be in trouble.
What?
Did you get me? You need it, okay, me too, me next, me next. Thank you.
He's got the special shirt. Of course.
Okay.
Can I say thank you, Erica?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You want to give Bob a hug?
No.
So.
That could've worked.
I don't wanna learn a good relationship.
So, we've got other business, you are more than welcome to stay for the rest or feel free and comfortable to go do what you need to do. I know you have football.
I'm getting nails done.
Hey!
I was next door.
Don't leave Cornell behind.
Yeah, we have four of these, so there's gonna, we bring that one with you on the night, okay?
Definitely.
And we'll present it so that the veterans can all see it. They're gonna go ahead and get the other three put up coming into town and then that one we'll put by the veterans memo.
I need to ask you guys to this one more, can I just get a picture with everybody here?
Sure.
Sure.
I think that would really go far for the city where everybody can see it.
Where do you want us, Ty?
And the commission.
You wanna, you wanna come back here with us or you want us down there?
Uh, wherever you, probably just do it with the commission and the mayor.
You have to get closer.
Out of the way. You come in and do, we'll go two on each side.
Smile.
I know.
Nope, nope.
Good job, commission.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, thank you all.
Hey, and thank you for your current service as a police officer. And thinking about it.
Hey, when do you get done?
Until December twentieth.
Oh, really?
Merry Christmas.
Just remember us when you catch us, you know.
Thanks.
They keep talking to me. Stop talking to me.
I used to make you jog to the cornfield in back, remember that, Ty?
Thank you, guys.
Did you jog to the cornfield in back?
Hey, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for indulging, everyone. Alright, number five, consideration discussion and possible action to approve resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing application for financial assistance from the Rural Economic Action Plan Fund, Bob.
This is a grant, uh, the REAP grant is, uh, one part of the REAP grant is administered through COET, the Cog of Governments in Shawnee that we belong to. The, uh, award amount is up to a hundred thousand dollars. As part of the capital improvement plan, we had identified the Ninth Street Standpipe as a, as a need. Um, we, we had paid quotes, um, and got to bring the standpipe back into service, back online, sandblasted and coated inside and out, well, inside sandblasted and coated, outside primed and they're gonna repair some things. The quote that came in lowest and best was from USG Water in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. So I wrote the grant to see if we could get that amount to get that standpipe back in service.
This is the one we discussed at a previous meeting that the due date was October thirty-first?
Yes. So we'll have to drive this down to Shawnee if it's approved, make sure it gets there in time.
Absolutely. Commissioners, anyone have any questions? Yeah, resolution fourteen twenty.
Motion to approve resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty-four, resolution authorizing application for financial assistance from the Rural Economic Action Plan Fund.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number six, consideration discussion and possible action to approve expense in the amount of seven thousand, one hundred and four dollars and eleven cents state contract price to Dell Technologies for the purchase of a Power Edge R three sixty server utilizing American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Mayor, this was included in our capital improvement plan, our, Innerworks is our company that maintains our server and our network and they had warned us about two years ago that our server would be approaching end of life in spring of twenty twenty-five. So we wanted to get out ahead of this. So this is the state contract price for the server and then the next item you'll see is for Innerworks to then install the server and do work, whatever magic they do, I don't know what all the actually do, but they have to do stuff.
Okay.
So that's what, that's what that item is all about and we'd like to use the ARPA funds, we do need to have that encumbered by December thirty-first, twenty-four, so we feel like this would be a really good use of funds.
So it didn't happen in twenty twenty-five? Oh, I carry it with me everywhere.
I'll make a motion to approve expense in the amount of seven thousand, one hundred and four dollars and eleven cents to Dell Technologies for purchase of Power Edge R three sixty server utilizing, utilizing the ARPA funds.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number seven, consideration discussion and possible action to approve expense in the amount of eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents to Innerworks for license, licensing, user setup and labor for the installation of a Dell Power Edge R three sixty server utilizing American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. So that's what you just spoke about?
Yes.
Was the installation of it? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion to approve the expense in the amount of eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents to Innerworks utilizing user setup using the ARPA funds.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number eight, consideration and discussion to review the Oklahoma Municipal Insurance Group, OMAC, municipal liability protection plan, insurance declarations and explanation of coverage.
Okay, so for those of you who actually know that many of you weren't here, um, there was a time, two or three years ago, when OMAC, our insurance company, actually paid us some money to go through a program, um, which I think everyone found pretty beneficial, which included, um, adopting the handbook and then subsequently reviewing the handbook, doing the stability test and reviewing the insurance coverage. It was like one of the things we needed to check off to get, to get the money. We don't, they don't pay us anymore, um, but we see value in it and so I thought I would go over with you, uh, we don't actually have the declarations taken years ago, but it's a, we have the certificate of coverage, I'm not sure that either one will help you that much, but OMAC, uh, in the materials that they provided, David Weatherford gave us just like this little cheat sheet as to what coverage we have. So it might be beneficial for you just to hear, let me just run down what, um, coverage that we have through, uh, OMAC, our insurance group. So first of all, we have bodily injury and property damage, um, that covers employees, elected officials and authorized volunteers for bodily injury and property damage, um, arising from all location and operations of the, of the city. We have personal injury coverage, which protects employees, elected officials and authorized volunteers for personal injury claims, including false arrest, assault and battery and violations of an individual's rights. Errors and omissions, that covers, protects employees, elected officials and authorized volunteers for errors and omissions, um, nonpractice involving alleged breaches of duties as defined in the document plan, just for your information, that doesn't cover me because I'm not an employee volunteer or elected official, um, but it is that type of, you know, like nonpractice insurance. Automobile liability for the cars we own, the vehicles we own, automobile, automobile physical damage, equipment damage, I don't think I need to explain what those are, you know, damages to cars. We have pollution damage coverage and that is legal liability protection for property damage and cleanup expenses resulting from, uh, covered pollution. So hazmat type, type things. Defense reimbursement, I don't know where they came up with this, but I'm, I'm glad it exists. It's called defense reimbursement for inverse condemnation, annexation or de-annexation to me and board of adjustment matters. So this coverage will re, will reimburse us up for fifty percent of our legal expenses and costs, up to ten thousand dollars. After we've paid five thousand dollars, they give us a little bit of money if we are sued for inverse condemnation, which means not property, it means taking someone's property without a proper condemnation. An annexation issue or if the board of adjustments, for example, denies a variance and we have to go to this court and litigate that issue. So that's goofy, honestly, it's kind of a goofy little area, but interesting. We have cyber liability coverage, that's important. And we have a legal defense coverage for workers' compensation retaliation claims. So just thought you probably hopefully learned something about coverage that we have and that you have some coverage in here too, there are things that cover you as elected officials. So, um, so there's that. And then, um, have you hung yet? Okay, no problem. But that's okay, thank you, I've been really rushing her and that was mean of me, I'm sorry. Let's have another nanny, bride.
I'd do it too, real quick.
While she, because Rachel's gonna keep adding up, she's been nice enough to do that for us, um, while we talk about the handbook. Oh, sorry, that's, that's item, that's agenda item number eight, Mayor.
Yes.
Finished eight.
Finished eight? Okay, no action, just, we were listening?
Yes.
Item agenda number nine, consideration and discussion to review the city commission handbook and stability test results to audit the commission's performance.
Okay. Each of you has received a handbook fairly recently. Neither Bob or I or, or Rachel are requesting or recommending changes to the handbook at this time. This is your opportunity to discuss anything about it, ask questions about it. This would normally be my opportunity or this Bob's opportunity to bring up something that might have happened in the last year that we think we might need to be reminded of or deal with differently. I personally can't think of anything, I don't know if Bob can, but, um, so I'm not sure how much you want to review the handbook. But Bob and I are fairly, and Rachel are fairly familiar, if there's anything, I know you're, uh, Veronica, you're new to the handbook.
I looked through it, all of it.
Look at it.
Well, yeah.
Then you don't even have to go to another agenda item because we kind of stuck them together to do the handbook and the stability test.
It was pretty straightforward.
Yeah, so.
I think just an observation, I've noticed in the last two and a half years, I have to explain a lot what the role is and, and, um, what our jobs are really, jobs not Bob's job, so, and how those are different, but, um.
Well, and I know like only, a lot of, I don't know how many times now I've done the training to various boards in the city and others on open meeting act and open record act, um, although you've gotten that recently, I didn't feel the need to do that again anytime soon. And if there's questions about that, that's sort of, that's in our handbook, so it's sort of on agenda. But what, what, what I did, I'm not gonna give it to you yet, but I did print out, um, I sent an email around last year, so it was super easy, that listed your scores for twenty, not yours, but the commission's scores for twenty twenty-two, commission's scores for twenty twenty-three. And when we're done discussing your results, um, at least that's kind of what I'm thinking, is when we're done this year, then you can compare them to, to, to previous years, I'll hand those out. I think having done this with David, I think the way that he would, would recommend that we do it is that we just discuss what you've done first before we start comparing it to what happened before, what was different or anything like that, so, um, Rachel.
I think I need to, um, request more out of the Vice Mayor at ceremonial functions, as well as the rest of the commissioners' ceremonial functions. Especially when there's a speech required or something. Or picture. Your underwear. It's, it's because of the, it's sometimes hard to catch.
We'll just pull out a piece of paper. If you want to, it might be helpful. Rachel's done so that you can list, or if it's still, if the test's still in your handbook, you can go lie and list.
Well, I do.
The overall scores.
So are we allowed to ask Bob a question?
Sure.
So, so how's our commission conduct with your staff, with city staff? Are you, are you happy with how we interact with you and the rest of your staff?
I don't think it could be any better and I really appreciate that.
I know, that's just.
Everything's very professional and very, I mean, it's wonderful. And it hasn't always been that way and it's not that way in a lot of communities, so I really appreciate that. And a lot of communities that are much larger, you know, have issues that we don't have.
That's good.
Very blessed.
Thank you, I just, I've, I've heard from other communities as well, that some issues in, in not getting along, I mean, in my opinion, it's okay to disagree.
Yeah.
And have a difference of opinion.
Absolutely.
Okay, are you ready? Really, I do wish I did fill out a blank page for you to fill us in because these numbers are so very close, really, it's interesting how close they are. So for, under financial, your group average was eight point four three. Governing body? Nine point two nine. Meetings? Nine point two nine. Employees? Nine point one four. Public image? Eight point eight six. Crisis management? Nine point three six. Economic development? Eight point four two. Planning slash goal setting, still planning, I guess? Eight point seven nine. Administration? Eight point nine three. And communication? Eight point seven one. So, as I said, these numbers are very close.
Well, they were fives and sevens years ago.
So just to the extent that it matters, because again, these numbers are really close, um, and a couple of years ago, you'll see that one of our numbers was, was, uh, strikingly lower, you know, we, everybody, the, the group, um, rated us strikingly, strikingly lower in one particular category. It's not, this isn't obvious, so I, to the extent that it matters, the lowest two, um, test scores are economic development at eight point four two and financial at eight point four three. So those two are essentially tied. And the highest score was a nine point three six and that was for crisis management. And then there was a tie for the next highest score. Both governing body and meetings got nine point two nine. I'm guessing what that means is that everyone who responded, um, it just means, no, it wouldn't have to mean that, I can't do math, I went to law school because I can't do math, but I'm, but it might be that most of us put the same number for, uh, those, each of those. So, um. So I'm going to make one comment and then I'm going to let you discuss everything you want to discuss, not just go ahead.
Okay.
Just about this one. Then I'll hand out the, the numbers for the last two years and let you compare where you are. But I think it'd be better to concentrate on this for a little bit. My one comment, and then Bob can make any one comment or five comments he wants to make. But is technically your lowest score is on economic development. I think that one of the things I've heard was that we don't have the resources to do economic development the way that you might write to. I'm sure that's true, but I think we're selling that short in a certain sense because even though you wouldn't call it economic development, we're doing an awful lot of infrastructure building. And what I mean by infrastructure, I don't mean pipes in the ground. I'm using a different word, a different meaning of infrastructure of getting, getting the government organized and prepared for, to be able to take advantage of development, economic development opportunities that come along. So, I, we, we are in economic development. We're just not watching, getting, getting into those agreements. I mean, we did do the donuts, you know, that's, that's a type of economic development.
But you're talking about the strategic plan, the comprehensive plan and clearing up some of our ordinances.
So we might have been like selling ourselves a little short on that economic development. Kind of like blinded with the fact that we, we don't own the land to go develop something new.
I just think if you look at it from, with a bigger picture in place, I mean, you can, to me, you cannot, to be ready for somebody that's going to come and pose something to you. And cover, covers being ready to, knowing how or whether to extend your sewer and water and protecting your ride away. It's a lot of the things that, that we're doing. You know, and so. Extending the.
Special use.
Special use, specific use permit.
Small box store stuff, that could be.
That, yeah, I mean, in a sense, you're doing economic, okay, that's kind of backwards. So really, when you think, okay, we're doing economic development by leaving stuff open, vacant land, because we're not allowing a small box store, dollar store there, you know? So it's, it's, it is all part of the big picture. Anything you, that was my one comment.
Two, and I mean, we, we went a long way by getting that tax for the parking wreck in the library. I mean, that's economic development in of itself. And it's like, that includes the feel goods, the people. And I really do, like after listening to you, I feel like I put it in a box myself when I graded it.
Me too. I want a new score.
Yeah, I want a new score. We all deserve a new score. So, from those different perspectives, to hear it from those different perspectives is, is good because it does broaden it and leaves room for a, a deeper understanding of, of what we're doing and the policies and making sure that developers and people don't come in here and think that they, you know, they need to come in, be respectful and realize that we have a process that we're going to go through before we put our names behind it, so.
And the frustrating thing is, all the professional developers know that and they expect that. Processes and permits and things, the way we do things and inspections. But I think the commission has gone an unbelievable distance in laying the groundwork for things to easily happen in the future. I mean, we'll have comprehensive plan update. Strategic plan, made a bunch of ordinance changes. And Tammy and I have talked about this, nobody's afraid to go back. If we make a change and then we see another change, we just address it and go back. That's, when you get outside, if you look around, it's not like that everywhere. Everybody just works together and try to do what's best.
And, I mean, you can even put the lights that are coming up underneath that. I think there's so many things that we know about that are in the works and they're in the future to come. And we're waiting on others, other groups and other entities for it to be on their schedule to come in and, and get things done like sidewalks and the lights.
Yeah, lights, sidewalks, Iowa tribe development, that partnership, water sewer. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things.
I know, right?
I think our planning and goal setting probably should have been a little higher myself. I mean, there's, well, there's two of us up here right now and then you guys spent a lot of hours working on that strategic plan. And what, was that two years, a year and a half? Year and a half? Sarah got in on the last few meetings of it, but that was a lot of time. And a lot of, I mean, we took, we used more meetings, Mark extended it, didn't he? So that we could get things done and accomplished, but.
And all that's going to complement the comprehensive plan.
Right. In the, the communication, I figured it would have been a little bit higher, but I think I need to do a better job, but I can only communicate with one commissioner at a time on one topic. I can talk to another one about a different topic, but you just feel, I don't, I don't look good in orange, do I?
If, if you're feeling that way and you can pinpoint, like a particular thing you wish you could have talked about, you know, let, let Bob know and it might be appropriate, it might not be. But to, to put on a consideration and discussion as an agenda item, doesn't have to be action. There may be times when I would even be saying to you, yeah, let's not consider and discuss that out loud right now. But just keep that in the back of your mind that.
Even on those group emails for the territorial plaza and everybody would reply all so that everyone in the group would understand me every time replied, not replied, like scared of that button. But I could do a better job communicating with Bob and Rachel, maybe what I would like to. I mean, I have a couple of times, is everybody going to be there? Are we going to have a quorum? And then that's when y'all reach out, so I could do better at doing that to communicate with commissioners. That doesn't include you.
Didn't say anything.
Anything else? I think it's pretty impressive, especially when you look back, 2022 meetings were five point six seven.
I handed out last, last these, this type of.
I can't meet them after.
So here it does give us something to discuss, actually.
So, back in 2022, we're at each other's throats.
2022 meetings was, the one was obviously lower and there were reasons for that.
I think we've grown as a commission and a staff to be able to work together a lot better and communicate a lot better. It's, since I've gotten on, it's done nothing but improve every year.
Rachel, ma'am, are you totaling this one, today's? What's the total for today?
I didn't tell you the total. I'm sorry. Eighty-nine point two three. I forgot to say that.
I'm going to be at A next time.
So the first thing you, or one thing you can discuss is that your financial is actually a little bit lower this year than last year. Eight point seven one last year, it's eight point four three this year. You're not letting staff do it again?
I think maybe that.
I don't think that's true. I don't have any idea, but I don't think that's true.
I think maybe some of that might be from all the, the money that's had to be put into the.
Oh, yeah.
I, I'd be, realistically speaking, there would be a whole lot more money in the bank if we hadn't had. But that had to be done to keep the city, you know.
Sales tax collections are down.
Yeah, I saw that.
And we, and we need to, what's the word, allocate, but encumber the ARB money. But that's been a kind of a.
Oh, tremendous. Thousand dollars over the last three years.
I mean, I've, I've asked Bob before, it's like, how much total have we pulled out of, you know, our extra? And it just feels like this year it's been a lot, but I'm, I would say nine out of 10 times it was, you know, to make sure we had.
And I also think that we were forced to jump in at the beginning of the budget year and make some big decisions with expenses that we generally would not want to do at that time, you know? We're trying to build money up and.
The two police cars at one time. It was, it was actually wise to put it in the future to do that because of how long in the past it has taken to get things back. And so pulling from the fiscal year ahead to ensure that we, we had vehicles for our police officers, you know? I, I think that that, that was early in the budget too as well coming up. And those are on the road right now, aren't they?
Uh, yeah, yep.
Okay, so I think when you're taking something like this, it is good to convalve. Okay, this is why, this is why we ranked ourselves so low. It gives us room for growth. Absolutely, but at the same time, it does help to have a little bit of reality check of where things went and why maybe we graded ourselves that way. Is that vehicle word that we need to have on the road? Adequate?
Adequate.
Make sure. Adequate.
It's a very important word.
Vehicle for.
Depends on who's using it.
For staff.
No, just one. Governing body is exactly the same as it was last year.
Yeah, we didn't improve on that, did we?
You know, not everybody gives tens. I don't give tens when I do. I did not do this one, by the way. But I rarely give tens like that, so I don't think that means we didn't do good.
Oh, I don't, I don't think so either. I mean, we have had a small turn. Veronica's joined us. And we have a new vice mayor. He's doing a great job, by the way. Really, I, I've enjoyed watching the growth. And being able to speak up.
Meetings, these has gone in the last two years from five point six seven to nine point two nine. Last year it was eight point eight six. Oh, no, I'm not doing anything.
COVID walls back?
Yes. Tinted ones, please.
Moving up on six different.
Moving up on six different ones.
But if, if this were to be a ten, is there something that is missing that should be?
I sure like seeing that the public image is up.
It is. It has gone up every year a lot, yeah. Went from seven point two one to eight point eight six this year. The only one that has gone, no, two, two of them have gone down last year to this year. They're still higher than 2022. Administration is, is went from nine point one four to eight point nine three. And communication went from nine to eight point seven one.
Wonder why. Were you, were you, were you on, were you on part of this one? Okay. I bet you were.
Since I've been here, just watching things, they've progressed and gotten better, so.
One thing, I'm get, this is, again, I didn't look at any of your scores. I don't know what anything, this is a total guess. But I think we only had two staff members writing administration, writing, doing it last year and we have three this year, so it could be that staff brought that number down because they tended to rank themselves lower. I'm just thinking that might be, might be part of it. Or it could be that there's something else. It's slight, I say slight. Communication is from nine to eight point seven one. Crisis management, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's like, I, I would tend to rate my part of it lower than, and I would rate your part of it higher and their part of it higher. So, yeah, we're kind of always harder on ourselves.
I know that I, communication was not one of my higher ones. And exactly because I feel like I don't communicate as much as I should, because I mean, I was scoring myself basically.
I feel bad when it comes to communication part because I have to wait until, wait till I have to work and I have to wait until after my lessons sometimes or, yeah. By the time I'm ready to sit down and do city stuff, it's like, they are already home and I don't want to bother them.
You are much more available than most mayors. I will just let you know. And nearly all mayors, except big cities, have day jobs. So don't rate yourself down on that one.
I do a great job in the summer.
Crisis management went up from eight point one four to nine point three six. Maybe we've, because we managed a couple of crises.
Was that, I can't, when was that ice storm? Was that last?
Couple of years ago. I think it was twenty.
It was like today's date.
It was, yeah, it was like two.
Twenty twenty two. That's just where. Well, I ranked it pretty high because I got to go do a lot of ceremonial stuff that, and I see emergency management there. I mean, that's, to me, that's big. I mean, Pistol Pete Fun Run, you know, the parade. And you see the city staff and the, Eric and his crew and then you know, the new little John Deere thing that we purchased. I got to see that in action the first time out. So there's been some other city things where they're out there. I mean, the firefighters to include, you know, Eric. And that's why, that's why I ranked it higher this time, I guess, just because I've seen it more. Like the, the little doggy parade on Sunday that that young lady put together. Eric had the fire truck was out there.
Well, I think that was the chief that was in the sparking costume.
I know. I have a picture of him. I had to take a picture with him and I feared it.
Fire chief, not the police. And really, this, again, to broaden that out a little bit, but, oh shoot, I lost my thought. Crisis management, there was another thing where that we. Oh, school resource officer. That was my thought.
Yes.
You know, you could kind of throw that into crisis management and preparation and all of that. Got a pretty decent program there.
Love getting extra peace arranged for some of the officers to work there.
I sure hope the state of Oklahoma.
That's big.
I sure hope they extend that. This is the second year of a grant. This is the third year, but, you know. I haven't heard, and I'm in it, I mean, I see the resource officers all the time and the kids love them. And I haven't heard any complaints from any, anyone in the community about those men and women being there. I mean.
It helps tremendously on calls too.
Absolutely.
Kids will, you know, talk to the officers or they may know them or they'll have a connection and say, do you know Officer, who, you know, Dean or whatever?
And then some of them, you probably know who to call because they've already interacted with that student before in a positive manner. And so, even the, those guys that come from Payne County, you know, sometimes we get the repeats at our building. So, we all know their names. I've had police officers come in the gym and play catch with the kids, do sprint races with them, walk and jog with them, I mean, walking through the classroom, walking down the halls and they high five. And the kids aren't afraid to walk up and pound it. I've even seen some police officers, you know, shake hands and, you know, okay, son, this is how you shake hands, you know. It's, to me, I could just keep talking about it. We need to move on. Because I could talk about it all day. They, they, they've done a great job. Very proud of them. Except for when they give me a hard time, not so much. And Officer Dean seems to have a great relationship over there at the high school.
Oh, yeah. He runs all that and does a good job.
Yes, he does. Is he the one that does the scheduling, like?
Yep, he does all the scheduling and coordinates with the superintendent.
He does a great job.
I would like to apologize to the chief of police for giving you guys a hard time sometimes.
It's fine.
It's, we're pretty worried. And then Rachel pointed out, big picture is that last year we should rate, rated an overall total of eighty-four point one four and it's eighty-nine point two three. So, for you teachers in the room, that's from the solid B to almost A.
Great, it's a horse.
So. But here's the thing, next year, don't look at the prior years before, when you do this. Don't even go there. Don't think about it. I think it's just, it'll be interesting to see.
I do.
Because we can't get too high. I mean, really, we're going to max out at some point. And I don't know that it's gonna be a disappointment if we come in a little bit lower one year, right? I mean.
I said it well ago, I, I think when, when you come across these numbers like that, I think it's okay. Like, the discussion that we're having is good. It's good to realize, yeah, we probably did rank ourselves a little bit in that area. But it's also a good realization to know where things fit in that file. And then it's, there always needs to be room for improvement. I mean, it's just, the bar gets raised. I mean, and that's, that's just the way it is. It needs to be raised, honestly, so that we can do our jobs.
I mean, nobody wants it, but if the number drops a little bit, I think that's okay. So, we can see where we're dropping the ball and where we picked up somewhere else and why didn't we other, let the other ball go? Nobody can be perfect.
I think it also helps understanding some of these things in comparison. When citizens ask or they have a question about something here and there and there, you know, it helps us be able to explain it to the community. Because we, we really are the ones that are the, the face of the community that they elected us. They appointed us.
But we have to remember the community is consistently changing all the time.
Yes, constantly. Any else? Okay, Tammy, what's next on this topic? Veronica, did you have anything?
I did not.
Okay. Justin?
I think we are improving and I think this group of commissioners are working very well with each other. Very proud to be a member of this commission.
Kind of a cool team, huh?
I don't have anything else unless there's something.
So, that's, we don't make a motion or anything on that, right?
No, this was just a consideration and discussion. I will send you an email, just for your records. And so, I have it ready to go next year where I had with all three year scores, just so you have it in your files. Since I did it last year, I might as well just keep outing it about. She said excuse herself, so, yes.
I, I make a motion that we adjourn tonight, special meeting, October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
She needs to call roll.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, we made a motion to adjourn. Do we need to back up?
No.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Because we can.
No.
I have the, we can do that.
Tell, let me just tell you what the guy, what he intended to me today and you'll understand that I'm doing really good to be here today. Sorry, I apologize.
Of course, already in the book.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.